Be very, very low. On the other hand, at least you gave him a shot. That's fair. That's reasonable. That's compromise. That doesn't open up the gates for anyone else who says, "Oh, I found a 50-acre piece. I'll go play there." And the reality is too, is that as far as talking about a warehouse at the landfill, the warehouse is going to be 100% based on this little word called logistics, which all happens to be talking about logic. And that is stuff of fuel and distance and time. To use a highly technical term, we are SOL on all of that. For the landfill. Yes. But to put that small amendment in on both Section 1 and Section 2 after the word establishment, except for industrial hemp establishments as of July 1, 2021, that apply for a Class 1 license. You let these folks have a shot. However low of a percentage we think it is, but they had a shot. But we are not opening the doors to everything else. And also, I don't want to muddy the waters too much, but I had asked last month and the solicitor had agreed with my opinion on the legalities, as opposed to my legal analysis, I won't say it was that. But that we do need to have specific language regarding use on public spaces here in the municipality. And that needs to be done sooner rather than later because again, come August 22nd, theoretically, that commission is going to have establish all its stuff. And then we're going to be bound by that if we don't act on that. That can be done separate apart from this piece tonight, but it needs to happen much sooner rather than any later. But again, that small amendment, hopefully, in Mr. LaFerty's opinion, would not be considered something that would require a whole new public hearing. Since after all, we're all here and we're all talking about it. And it's a small exception only to one class, only to a very limited group of potential applicants. And I'd love it if we got the golden goose. Unfortunately, no offense, guys, I think it's going to be a goose egg at the end and not a golden one. But we gave them a shot. And anyone else who may fit that particular definition, but that means it was already established because you said, you would say as of July 1, for that particular type, because therefore it is something that's closely but not exactly related to cannabis cultivation. And is applying only for the Class 1 cultivation license. So it's not opening it up to anyone else who comes in and says, "Oh, hey, we were one of those that said, okay to something, let's come in and do that." It would not do that. But it would be a compromise that allows some to take a shot at it, does not open the gates for everything else. And as others have said, that can always be modified later. But the problem is if you went ahead with ordinance 4 and got rid of ordinance 3, then for five years, we're stuck with everything. And as Mr. LaFerty has already stated, and as anyone who can read and take a look at it knows, those rules aren't put in place yet. And so we would then be bound by whatever is done from the outside rather than what we in the community have decided. So I would implore you to make that small amendment, open parentheses, except for industrial hemp establishments as of July 1, 2021, that apply for a Class 1 license, close parentheses, after the word cannabis establishments in both Sections 1 and 2. And therefore you've given them a shot, but you're not opening it up anywhere else. Thank you.
Tom Brad. Just trying to understand. You do not want to distribute or sell in town?
Correct.
But do you in your other locations?
Huh?
Do you do in your other locations?
No, I only operate in California else.
So you have other, right, right. Because you said you have other states that you operate in.
Yeah, I consult for other states, yes.
You consult?
Yes.
Because before you said you had facilities in the.
Well, I'm a consultant, so I consider them my facilities because I work with them on a regular basis.
They're your clients.
They're my clients, yes.
You don't own any of them?
Yeah, I don't own them, no.
So you own in California?
I don't own in California. I consult for them in California.
You're only consulting now?
Yes. I consider, they're my clients, so I consider them.
Distribute out of those locations?
No, no product is distributed, no. And the laws in California require that you work through a distributor that will come and take your product and then they distribute it to the dispensaries.
So do you concern that, but this is, now you want to sell or you want to produce for recreational use?
Yes, sir.
So this is outside of the bounds of medical use?
Outside of the bands of medical use.
This is different than you were speaking of, so you're already doing that then? You're already, you're already producing now for?
We're producing hemp right now, yes.
For uses of?
For anything, any ailment or anything that anybody wants to use.
So you're already doing the medical use stuff?
Yeah, so it's CBD, it's CBD and CBG is what we're allowed to produce. So like the USDA standards require it to be 0.3% THC or less.
I will, I will speak as someone who has a lot of prejudice against this. Okay, so I'll let you know that. Because besides being around people who've used drugs all my life and I've never done it, and I can say that honestly, but I've been around it a lot. Plus I worked for 10 years at the LNC Rescue Mission. Not one of those people started with anything but pot. I'm not for it at all. I'm against it. I don't believe it. You're talking about recreational. The difference, I'll tell you the difference between alcohol and marijuana. You can drink alcohol responsibly and you can drink it for the purpose of getting high. The only purpose to smoke is to mood alter. And it becomes addictive and it changes the way things, and I'm dealing that with kids. I mean, you could say that, you could say that. I mean, I've done it. I've dealt with it.
I'm actually a physician, so I'm ready to respond to that.
But I've dealt with it. And I've watched addiction and I've watched kids' personalities change. I've watched their thinking change and I'm watching it now with my own. So I don't, the only purpose to step into recreational use, it's far different now from than medical use. So you're beyond what your, your brother, I'm glad you're doing great, but we're talking about something wholly different here.
But this is not a panel discussion between whether or not these folks should get a license and how we feel about it. This is about whether or not we're going to adopt on second reading an ordinance that we started before we even met, before these folks were ever in the building, before we ever met them. One really has nothing to do with the other, though your thoughts on cannabis are important to us. There are no individual targets in this discussion.
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I don't mean to attack, but just simply, I've I've watched it. I've dealt with it. I've seen people's lives totally wrecked. Seen people somewhat unaffected by it. But I will say this, that we, yes, we have to decide as a community what we want to stand for, what we want to elect. And we're already, it's already being done for medical use. So what's the only other purpose of going above that? More money, more? Trust me, you're not going to cut out the black market. It's not going to be like doing this is going to keep, you know, someone off the street from buying it and selling it to some kid in high school. It probably just provide another avenue for it. So I don't understand the point now stepping over into allowing the recreational use production.
So then are you saying that you support the opt-out?
If opt-out means none of it, I'm more in that line. I'm leaning more towards that. I don't know if we're going to get any financial benefit from this. I know every time somebody tells us our tax is going to go down, they go up. If I hear that one more time, I'm just going to.
All right, listen, can we not, sorry, sorry, I would prefer that we don't.
I always wanted to introduce the drinking aspect in my life.
You could, the meeting is open to the public.
Can I say that? If you gave him a chance, can I say that?
The meeting is open to the public.
I didn't.
Meeting is open to the public.
Okay.
And if you want to address the council, you address the council. We're not going to address individuals here.
Okay, can you address the council?
Yes.
All right.
Are you, sorry, are you done, Tom?
Yes.
Forget it then. I'm not going to address.
Well, I, I, could I address that? So as a physician, probably the most harmful drug we've ever dealt with in medicine is actually alcohol. It's the only drug that you can actually die from withdrawal symptoms. So though it's sold over the counter, we've done a real great job of putting pretty girls in bikinis and good-looking guys and attracting young people to alcohol, which has happened. The fact is, it is actually the most, it is the number one cause of disease throughout this country. So, so that's important and it's highly dangerous.
The pot seems, you're free.
There's been those studies of that. There's been those studies, in fact, there's been a lot of studies that show medicinal value.
We're going back and forth to speaking.
Sorry, I apologize. I just, yeah, I apologize. You know, I think it was, it's a it's a very difficult comparison because one has medical application. Alcohol has no medical application at all and a deadly withdrawal symptom, so. And in fact, alcohol withdrawal has been, or alcohol use in states that have had recreational marijuana, marijuana introduced has been proven to decrease by 60% across the board. And that's happened in all the states that it's been made recrea-, so I just want to make sure that the facts are accurately represented. Believe me, drug abuse is a terrible thing. We've seen it all the time, over and over again in the fentanyl crisis, which is also another issue that's raging in America, the pain pill problem that's pouring across the border. It also shows the same reduction in people's dependence or addiction to pain pills in states that have marijuana available. So on those notes, there are medical applications, there are a ton of different uses that they're finding in universities with the different ratios of actual hemp and the THC plant being combined because they're finding one molecule needs the other molecule to actually cross the bloodstream very appropriately. So there is a lot of potential, I think, in this field and, you know, I do agree that drug addiction is a serious problem in this country, but I have never seen anyone homeless because they smoked marijuana. I've never saw anybody die from withdrawals from marijuana.
Does anybody else who hasn't spoken yet, Mrs. Cassie Graham?
Hi, Judy Cassie Graham. I was kind of resonating with Creed's point, but I love, you know how I love ordinances and just to add a couple words, sounds like a plan, but I wonder what Mr. LaFerty thought about that.
Off the cuff, adding those few words is a substantial change, which would require rep publication and another public hearing. Also, as Mr. Poe was speaking, I was thinking about whether or not it would be valid to do that or whether it would be considered some sort of selective preference and not giving others, others an opportunity. And I'm not so sure that that's consistent with, with the law. But I'm not saying it isn't. I just don't, I can't tell you that up here right now.
Well, certain things have occurred to me, hearing everyone speak. We had a presentation to the senior citizens about substance misuse disorder and it's really complicated, but I think that the state passing this law, they gave it thought, the people of the state of New Jersey voted for the marijuana law. So it's all very complicated, but I like what Mr. LaFerty said, that if you opt out, you can always opt back in when you have more information. And it sounds like you all don't have enough information to make a comfortable decision at this moment. So the sensible thing to me is buy some time, opt out, find out how it works. I really was impressed by the presentation. I think it's wonderful that we have citizens that have these great ideas and hopes. And I also think a lot of money would get us a full-time city clerk that we really need, so that I, I'm all for that, but I'm just sympathizing the whole thing. I think that I would support opting out now and figuring it out.
Anyone else in the public who hasn't spoke? Sorry.
Yes, again, from the UFTW, we we oppose the opt-out. Couple of comments just on why we oppose it, some of the reasons. One, the commission is writing the rules and regs as far as the application. S21, which was the state law that passed, gives home rule already to town sewers and boroughs. So those rules, those, those rules and regs have nothing to do with the local municipality. They only have to do with the application of the applicants. The second thing I'll comment on that is, is that there's 24, there's 24/7 access to state police for cannabis right now in every facility. It's more protected than a bank, a doctor's office, or a writing. So there's 24 axes, 365 days a year. The state can pull those tapes at any time. Facilities have to have 30 days of backup tape at all time under state law currently. And the second thing is, just one time, just to repeat it, you're going to have a application process, the city of Baytown. It's a merit-based application. That way you're not just going to get a lawsuit against yourself. So that's, that's, that's how I would suggest. Thank you.
Mr. Regis, Doctor?
Can you turn on the air conditioning? It's hot.
I just said, I fall on your necks.
It's hot. Can you turn on the air conditioning?
Mr. Poe, did you have something that you're going to add in?
Yeah, it's hot. Can you turn on the air conditioning?
Sorry. Sorry, I'm going to take the final comment. Go ahead.
Okay. I just want to say that the council, you guys have a chance to help this community with additional revenue. And with that revenue, you can help yourselves. You can build the facility, take children off the streets and give them something to do. There are a lot of constructive things you can do with that money. And I think that million dollars will probably build into a lot more down the road. And it could make, they could really help the city of Estillmater. And you guys need the help, let's face it. You do need it. And we hit it. And I just think it's property taxes can go down for the citizens. It can help them. It can raise property values. They can.
For their writing. I'm sitting here, I'm sitting in New Jersey, and my property taxes go down, and then they go up, sorry.
I told you, I don't want to convert to that.
All right, does anybody on the council have another way to bring a million dollars closer to the Estillmater?
That all sounds so great, because it's on your side that you're trying to sell something and
I'm not trying to tell you anything.
No, if I wanted something out of this town, I would bring out all the daisies and roses too. But you're not telling me what the other, other side of things are.
I'm not trying to tell you anything.
You're just not, no. You're trying to get something from.
I'm a very successful businessman.
I get that.
I employ many, many people in the US.
I just want facts. I want, I want positive and I want negative. I want pros, I want cons. I want to weigh it out and see what is facts.
I'm going to give you a fact. I employ many people in America and I make, I make their lives better.
So you're telling me that the business that you want to bring here, there are no cons to it. It's all just.
Give me a con, give me a con. I didn't legalize, I didn't legalize marijuana, stay in New Jersey, Dave.
And that's all great, but look, I'm not saying I'm against marijuana. I just don't know if I want, you know what, I've lived here since 73 and I've never seen armed guards, people that are going to have guns on them in a business in my town. I just don't have that. So when somebody, when the Clemsons were having their chicken farm and their feed farms, they never had 24/7 observation with guards and guns. They would let the kids come on the farm and we would eat their apples and we would do things. That's the farms we're used to. That's what we did when we were kids. I never had to say to my kid, "Don't go down there, there's guards in there." And exactly where you're at, all the kids like to ride their pawns back there. I mean, they love riding back there.
You think 73 and 2020 are the same?
They're not the same, but what I'm trying to say to you is you asked me, "What's a con?" And I just told you one of my cons. It's not the same kind of law I was able to say.
Like if I, if I may address that, so the cons are?
I was taking the last call.
Oh, I'm sorry, Paul.
We're not going to have, we're not going to have people watching back and forth in the rifle.
I didn't say yous were, but I'm saying you're just telling me all the good things that are great about it, but you're not telling me everything. There's always an up and a down to everything, everything.
I own the farm, okay? The farm that you're.
Well, who owns it? I'm not kidding. How many people live there?
I own the farm and, and these are my family.
Farming's difficult. It takes a lot.
But I don't understand it. And I know what I, and another thing that I don't understand, like I said, I saw you on the internet and says that you visited. Now you say you're going, you're living here in Estillmater and you want this, but I'd like to know how many other homes that you had and where's your next home going to be, where you're going to open up another facility? And where's that home going to be?
I'm trying to.
I mean, you're telling me that this is now Estillmater is the great place where you want to settle in and you want to do this to Estillmater because this is your town? But you seem to be moving as you go along with this business. You're going here, you're going here, you're establishing yourself here, you're establishing yourself here. How do I know where yours is going to be 10 years from now?
Talk to Arnold and Chris, at least get to know who I am. I mean, I, I'm making this a home for us.
I have nothing against you, but don't try to sell me all the roses.
Look, I think that you're.
I want to know everything. And that's why we were basically opting out because it's not that we're saying no. We're saying we just want to know more and we're not getting more because all we're getting is the sweet smelling stuff of it. Oh, we'll give you a lot of money and you could be out of debt. You don't have to pay taxes, but you're not telling us everything.
You have very valid concerns. And I think that your concern about, you know, security guards and the change of a property, these are all valid concerns. You know, I've sat here thinking about what would be the biggest negative. I would say higher foot traffic, yes. That would be a possible negative. You know, that would be something that as a neighbor, I could see somebody being concerned about is like, hey, people are going to be driving there. But if it's the residents that are driving there, is it a bad thing?
What would the residents be going there for?
Because, for work.
Oh, for the job?
I mean, the, I just want to say locally, locally, huh?
Because when the campground opened up up there, do you know how many times I got people flying by? And then they stopped at the end and they throw all their liquor bottles out into the woods, into the bottle.
We pick those up every single day.
It's on 9th Avenue.
I've been walking and picking up bottles daily.
But I'm saying it brought higher traffic, it brought a concern, a speed limit on our street and stuff like that.
Yeah, it's difficult.
And that was great for tax, but what I'm saying is there was a downfall to that too.
You are correct. You are very correct.
So I would just like, I would just like an honest opinion of everything and not just all the sweet smelling stuff of, you're going to not pay taxes, which, you know, I would want it in writing too.
Ms. Sparks, you have very valid, valid points. Not a single thing that you've said I could disagree with. Not a single thing. All I think that I would like to have opportunity of is have an open conversation about these things. How can we alleviate some of these stresses? How can we go into this as a group together saying that this will effectively help people out in this community instead of taking away?
I'll tell you how. You sit down with all of us and not just the old Mr. Mayor of it.
And I didn't know that. We just reached out trying to talk to anybody.
Because you know what? I'll tell you. Coming from him is him pushing and that's, that's my biggest concern. That's what really makes me put on a brace.
Can we?
You went to the wrong person.
Can we have a time where?
I'm telling you, he just invalidated what I just said.
Ms. Sparks?
He just validated what I said.
Ms. Sparks, the, the main thing is, is we, we just reached out trying to talk to anybody. We wanted to, to get involved and get involved earlier.
I would came to city council, not to the mayor.
And, and I apologize.
You're the third to propose into town and the first that never came to a council meeting.
And I apologize. I work, I work seven days a week on that farm. Go ask Arnold and Chris, they see me out there at 9 o'clock at night.
You found the time and find a job.
I actually, my business partner Cameron researched online who we could talk to. And we, we happened to reach out that way. What I would say is that, you know, I didn't think that by reaching out to the mayor, that that wouldn't be communicating to you guys. You know, we weren't, we were, we, we made a mistake in the fact that we didn't approach everybody right away. I think that if we had the opportunity, at least talk, come over to the farm, let's talk about all these things. You know, I want to make sure everybody here is happy.
Well, we, we came to a decision to opt out.
I'm going to wrap up the public portion.
You have one more.
I'm going to wrap it up.
One more here.
Mr. Hazer. Mayor Hazer.
Two questions. Do them both at the same time. I only get one.
Yeah, combine it and combine the two in the one.
Where did the $1 million figure come from? And if that's a valid assumption, that's what this town's going to get, wouldn't you be prudent to ask for half of that upfront before this gets gone?
At least it gives the whole.
I don't know how we would be able to get half upfront, but they're proposing that a 30,000 square foot facility is going to produce a $50 million annual crop. 2% is a million dollars to the city. We have a local purpose tax of $1.2 million. That basically removes the local purpose tax. I didn't create these numbers. This is what they're projecting. Even if it was produced, a half of a million. Even if it was.
Yeah, who is that?
Even if it was.
Who are these people? What is?
They, they own Nelson's Farm and they live over there. We want to tell you.
But they're already growing pot up there.
They're growing cannabis. He can't, he doesn't do anything, but CBD is all they grow. Producing out of it.
It's funny, we call it cannabis. We've changed the names of pot.
Make it legal.
Does it all sound so pretty?
Once again, on record, I voted no in November. But now that it's legal, most people that I've spoken to have all said, hey, if it's legal, you might as well make the money now. And there's no chance, Mayor, that we're going to get a facility that's going to come to Estillmater. There's only 37 facilities that'll be done in the state of New Jersey.
This is the third that's wanted to.
Well, every, listen, there's thousands of people that want to do this, Mr. Bills, but only 37 are actually going to get a license. We don't have any guarantees that anybody.
There's no chance anybody's going to want to do anything else.
There's no guarantee.
This is the third interested, interested party that's wanted to.
I am saying there's no guarantee that any of them will get a license. They're going to apply. There's going to be at least 1,000 people to apply. There's only going to be 37 lucky winners.
So what are you going to do now, Mayor?
Well, I think at this point you need to see if there's any more problems.
As you know, with decorum and protocol, as it relates to where we are leading.
I was taking the last call from Mayor Hazer. So now, why don't you make a motion?
Well, you have to close the public hearing.
That's exactly correct. Make the motion.
Go ahead, Mayor, lead us.
Make a motion to close the public portion. All on tape. So now council can speak?
Yes, council can only speak.
Sure.
He's been sitting here long enough to know that. I'll speak briefly. I think there's a lot of confusion and there's something of a circus atmosphere around this matter. And what it means to council and what is council's charge if it relates to the residents that elected us and who rely on us for governance. This is not, it was not a month ago, neither is it tonight, about any single effort or any particular group of interested people. It's about beating the August 21st deadline whereby we would inherit all of the state law if we don't take affirmative action one way or another. We have been led and guided by our solicitor and come to understand independently of him that in keeping with what Mrs. Cassie Graham said, the wisest course of action for Estillmater at this time is to opt out. Once we've done that, we can opt back in at any time, at any level. We can participate in commercial cannabis cultivation and sales at any level, anytime that we want to, if we opt out now. If we don't opt out, we will inherit what the state has decided is legal in New Jersey and can't change it for five years. I've heard, I'm speaking, Mayor. I'm speaking, Mayor. I have not heard anything so far regarding council's responsibility to either opt in or opt out that changes my mind about what I thought coming into the evening. I appreciate your interest, frankly. And I would invite you, should we decide to opt out, I would invite you to enjoin us in how we may opt back in or what the future may look like. But our responsibility to public safety and the safety of the city as it relates to this ordinance is that we act before August 21st. That's what we have to do. That's as much as I have to say. Okay, you're incorrect with what you said with regards to we have to inherit all of what the state gives us. We have.
Mr. Solicitor, what happens if we don't?
I'm speaking. I'm speaking now.
But you're not the expert. The solicitor is the expert.
I am speaking. You're not the expert. Why aren't you reliably the expert?
Can we just ask?
I know what I've been told by the expert.
I'm speaking right now, so just let me speak.
You're shouting right now.
Go ahead, Mr. Bills. Knock off your draw circus sandwich, okay? Knock off your circus sandwich.
Fill us in there.
We have a proposed ordinance that Mr. LaFerty created. Okay, and it specifically says if we were to opt in, we would only allow the cultivation and the warehouse production of. And both of them go hand in hand. We are not going to have a ordinance that's going to allow wholesaling. We're not going to have a walk-in retail store to buy a pack of joints or gummy bears or anything. And that's specifically what's in this.
But that's not what we're considering right now. Right now, we're considering the opt-out.
You're saying that, you're saying that the other ordinance that we're going to do makes the state.
I haven't said anything about the other ordinance.
Says what we're going to.
We're talking about the opt-out ordinance right now.
Mr. Bills, why are you the only one to have to speak on it? What is it?
I beg your pardon?
What is it? Do you just always have to speak and be right?
If you hadn't said anything tonight, we'd be home by 8:00.
That's right.
Really, no. You're wrong with what you're saying. You're wrong with what you're saying.
Mr. Solicitor, if we choose to do nothing, what happens on August 21st?
If you do nothing, then you inherit all six classes of cannabis.
If you do nothing, then you inherit all six classes of cannabis.
And that is correct?
For how long?
If we do nothing.
Five years. For how long?
For five years.
Oh. If we do nothing, what I'm saying is that we probably should do the opt-in, and that would be specific just simply to the cultivation of.
We can do that anytime after we opt out, we can do that at any time.
What is the, what is the benefit of doing it after? Because they're looking to see what are the towns are gonna be allowing this, and those who were the... Those businesses are gonna be going to those towns, and there's only 37 licenses, we will be out. It's over now.
So you would rather just go to something else?
It's only for now, Mayor, it's only for now.
So there's only 37 licenses, you just said, even if we take this ordinance for, we're still not gonna get it, because there's only 37 licenses.
We don't know who's gonna get the license, Mrs. Max, nobody knows that. There is no crystal ball on this table at my house or anywhere, there is no crystal ball.
The assumption is that Estill Manor wants to grow pot, and I don't know that we can make that assumption that the residents of Estill Manor want pot growing in the town, I don't, I don't want pot growing in this town.
Then maybe what we can do is this, we can hold a public hearing next week at the Autocorps, and we can have all the residents speak.
We could, we couldn't do that.
Yes, we could.
That's not what we're here to do.